My call just.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Sure.
Good on the recording and everything?
Yeah.
The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on January 10th, 2021. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier-News, the Echo Sentinel, and tap into Warren, and filed with the Township Clerk of the Township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please rise and join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, I'll call the roll. Mr. Bellish?
Here.
Mr. Bishi?
Here.
Mr. Breezy?
Here.
This is Clark.
Here.
This is DiMaggio.
Here.
Ms. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
This is On. And Mr. Franco?
Do.
All right, we have form.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10411 permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters. Now therefore be it resolved the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss material the disclosure of which constitutes an unwarranted invasion of individual privacy. Action will be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately 30 minutes, and be further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second.
No, board members, all those in favor, go to executive session.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions? Board is now in executive session.
Yeah.
We off mute. Okay. The motion to return to public session. For those in favor, say aye. Most sessions. Board is now back in public session. This is all thanks. Good to see you.
Yes.
To the record, Mrs.
Resolve that the Board of Education approved the public and private session minutes of the November 22nd, 2021 board meeting.
Yes.
Mr. Bellage?
Yes.
Mr. Bisi?
Yes.
Mr. Breezy?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio? Is color?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. On?
Yes.
And Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero one extension.
Correspondence and information.
Yes, so we reported to the board a total of three H I B investigations, two of those at the middle school, one at Mount Horab School. The one at Mount Horab School was confirmed H I B, one of the two at the middle school was confirmed H I B. Also reported a total of four suspensions, one in school and three out of school. For the privacy of the students involved, I'm not going to name the schools of those, but the board has a copy of the suspension report. That's all for there.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Okay, so just a few topics before we get to Dr. Mingle's remarks and then the few presentations that we have. On December 10th, we were visited by the acting commissioner of the Department of Ed, Dr. Alan McMillan. We toured Central School and the middle school. She was very engaging, asked our students questions, played some, did some basketball drills with them. It was, it was, it was a nice visit. We had the opportunity to sit with her after we were done with the, the in the in room visits and, and just kind of talk about some topics and raise some questions that we had from, from myself, Dr. Mingle, Mr. Kimmick and Mr. Hagel. So I thought it was, I thought it was a nice visit. The referendum on December 14th passed, so we're very happy about that. We can get on with the Capitol Works going forward. I'm sure Dr. Mingle will, will speak to as well. A couple of things going on. I know there's a surge now with COVID cases happening with this new Omicron variant. And one of the things we're going to be talking about today is test to stay, which Dr. Mingle will elaborate, but I think is a, is a, is a good topic. And I would just encourage. I mean, beyond the power of this board, I would encourage those that do have the power to, to really use logic in, in applying rules going forward and make sure that those rules make sense. I don't know that they have in the past. As an example, before this school year started, just as a reminder, we did as a board approve a masking plan that was predicated on actual data, which I believe for most of this fall would have resulted in our kids not wearing masks in building. Maybe just until recently. And as you know, that, that, that plan was undermined by the governor's blanket order that everyone wear masks in schools, which I think is just, again, it's not logical and it takes away any power of the school district to use its discretion and, 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 and use science and everyone talks about science, but let's look at transmission numbers. Let's see how serious these, these illnesses are and, and use judgment off of that. So I would hope going forward that there is some application of that. This is my last board meeting as, as a member of the board and certainly as president. So I just wanted to say thank you to all that a few people, but it's been a privilege to serve on the board and to try and help the children of our district. As you know, I only have the one kid, but I think he's pretty good.
He'd be happy to hear that.
And I love to, I love to see him get a good education. Obviously, the intention was never to, you know, when I got onto the board, dealing with COVID was nowhere on the horizon. And that seemed to take up the last basically two years of, of, of my, my three year term. So hopefully going forward, the board can focus on school related issues and, and finding ways to make the district better. I think it's already pretty good, but there's always room for improvement, right? So I want to thank my fellow board members. I want to thank especially for this year, you guys having the trust in me to vote me as president this year. I do appreciate that. Sincere thanks to the administration along the way, especially Dr. Mingle, Mrs. Lenhart, who is enjoying her life in Massachusetts now. And, and, and recently joining us, Mr. Hagel, you guys have been very supportive of the board and, and it's me personally, so I just want to say thank you. And, you know, one of the other things that I would like to just leave you with from a president's remarks standpoint is in the political environment that we have in the country right now, I think is nice that we can have nine people on a board and speak civilly about issues that maybe we don't necessarily agree on. And I think the school boards, at least our school board, has become, I think, one of the last bastions of civil discourse, which I think is a good example for the rest of city, state, federal government to take note of, that you can disagree with people and still be respectful to one another and see each other's points, listen to their arguments, and then make decisions based on what you believe to be right. And then move on to the next topic, whether you win or lose that particular issue. So thank you to all of my fellow board members for, for behaving in such a manner. And, and I hope to see it continue as, as new members come on for years and years. So thanks to everyone for that. Appreciate that. Dr. Mingle?
Thank you, Mr. Franco. I do have a couple of presentations tonight, so I'll try to be brief here, but I, I want to echo the comments about the commissioner's visit. I thought it was, it was really great. I especially want to thank Mrs. Tujia, the central school principal, Mr. Valar and Ms. Mensinger, middle school principal and vice principal, because we had about three days' notice of her visit and they put together a phenomenal experience, starting with student representatives of Central School welcoming the entire group, including Assemblywoman Yunios. They were very receptive. And although I don't think I can take credit for pushing them a little bit on this test to stay, the governor and the commission of health today announced that in January it'll be here. So we'll talk more about that in a few minutes. So thank you to everybody for making that happen. It was a good visit. I also want to announce the recipients of this year's governor's educator of the year awards. Mr. Franco joined me on December 7th to hand those out. This program highlights educational innovation, student achievement, the rewards of teaching and important services outside the classroom environment that lead to student success. The classroom teacher recipients at A L T, Sanjita Livingston, special education teacher, at Central, Lindsay Carroll, ASAP math teacher. At Mount Hora, PJ Jones, grade four teacher. At Woodland, Christina Trainer, grade one teacher. And at the middle school, Alexis Slack, ASAP English language arts teacher. We also have educational services professional recipients for each school. At A L T, Melissa Fidosh, paraprofessional. At Central, Nancy Lauber, paraprofessional. At Mount Hora, Michelle Zagambik, who's a technology teacher and coach. At Woodland, Sherry DeCarly, a paraprofessional. And at the middle school, Valerie Nelson, a paraprofessional. Like we did last year, I'll be spending time with each group of recipients to do a little, you know, why did you get into education? What's it, what's it mean to you? That will film and we'll share out through our community briefing. Those were, well received. It's nice to kind of see the story behind the story there. So congratulations. We'll also have them at a meeting in the spring so that we can celebrate them as well. All right. Today, for those that aren't aware, we had an emergency response at Central School unrelated to any school issue. There was a serious vehicle, motor vehicle accident on Mount Horab Road. For a moment, we thought that there might be emergency helicopters landing at both Central and Mount Horab School and our staffs at both places and our students went into action with the training that they have. It ended up that we had the landing take place at Central. So I want to thank Mrs. Tujia, Prinsell, Ms. Petch, school counselor, the staff and students at Central School, including the fifth graders who were actually out at recess at the time and did, I mean, in, in less than a minute, we're back in the building with a reverse evacuation. And Mr. Heaney from Woodland School who came over with me to be an extra administrator on site for management. It was used as a landing zone for a state police helicopter. And then everything was back to normal, you know, shortly thereafter. We checked in with all the kids and it communicated with parents and everything else. So thank you for that. The final certification of the referendum results will not occur until next week, but the preliminary results show 77% support for the project. So I know I echo Mr. Franco and I'm sure the board and thanking the community for their support and their trust in the process that we use to get to that referendum. Mr. Hagel's already been meeting with the architects and Mr. Pate for the scheduling of the projects. We expect to, to start in the summer of 2022 with additional work in the summer of 23 and concluding in the summer of 24, obviously. So there'd be much more information about those things as we go forward. And then I also wanted to mention what's going to happen with contact tracing over winter break. So this was in last week's community briefing. It'll be there again this week. But it's, it's important that our school principals and nurses who are essentially working seven days a week right now on contact tracing have some time off as well. So what we're saying is that anybody who has a known or suspected case lets us know via email no later than the morning of December 26th of any cases that have been leading into that time period, because that gets us in the window of when we would need to do contact tracing as a school. On Sunday, the 26th, our leadership team members will work to contact trace any cases reported to us that day. But then we're going to turn off the email and not deal with that for a week. Because those cases would not have an impact on the school district. They would have been cases that would be on the window for the school district. Because those cases would not have an impact on the school district, they would have been cases that would be on the window for the school district. And we will come back to that on January third. And what that means is we ask everybody in the community if there are symptoms or something else, even if you're not sure, just let us know so it's on our radar by the twenty sixth. And then for the following week, everybody knows what to do at this point. If there are symptoms, the health office will be open as far as the health official goes, but we want to make sure our nurses and our principals also have a chance to take a breath, be with their families and celebrate the holidays as well. And then I'll just conclude by thanking our outgoing board members, we'll do that formally in, in just a minute, but it's not easy to be on a board of education in general. It's especially not easy to be on a board of education going virtual to in person, virtual, dealing with the challenges of a pandemic. As volunteers in the community, you hear about it all day and all night. So I thank all of you for stepping up and doing that for this community. It's been really important for us as an administration, but for the kids as well. And Mr. Franco, I mean, stepping into a leadership role during, you know, voluntarily agreeing to take on the presidency in the midst of all this is, you know, something really important. So thank you. And I, I agree, it's been, it's been really good to get to know you better and to work together this year. So I think with that, we'll turn to the recognition of outgoing board members.
Okay. We want to make sure they don't get stretched. So our first recognition of service, the Warren Township Board of Education Resolution of Appreciation. Whereas Mrs. Lori Clark has served the children and community of Warren Township as a board of education member for one year. And whereas Mrs. Clark has served the board as a member of the curriculum communications and technology committee. And whereas Mrs. Clark has served the board as its alternate representative to the Wachong Hills Municipal Alliance Committee. And whereas Mrs. Clark has established in the teaching staff, parent community and administrative team, a reputation of trustworthiness, fairness and commitment to the district's high standards. And whereas Mrs. Clark has served as a champion for excellence in all areas. Now therefore be it resolved that the Warren Township Board of Education, on behalf of the entire Warren community, does hereby extend its sincere thanks and gratitude to Mrs. Clark for her service to the children of Warren and does hereby wish her all the best in all of her future endeavors. The Warren Township Board of Education Resolution of Appreciation. Whereas Mr. Alan Bellish has served the children and community of Warren Township as a board of education member for three years. And whereas Mr. Bellish has served the board as a member of the finance, operations and security committee and the ad hoc return to school committee. And whereas Mr. Bellish has served the board as its representative and alternate representative to the Somerset County Educational Services Commission. And whereas Mr. Bellish has established in the teaching staff, parent community, administrative team, a reputation of trustworthiness, fairness and commitment to the district's high standards. And whereas Mr. Bellish has served as a champion for excellence in all areas, but they focus on the district's long-term fiscal health. Now therefore be it resolved that the Warren Township Board of Education, on behalf of the entire Warren community, does hereby extend its sincere thanks and gratitude to Mr. Bellish for his service to the children of Warren and does hereby wish him all the best in all of his future endeavors.
You see where this is going?
I see where this is going.
All right. Warren Township Board of Education Resolution of Appreciation. Whereas Mr. Mark Franco has served the children and community of Warren Township as a board of education member for three years. And whereas Mr. Franco has served the board as a member of the personnel and negotiations committee, the finance operations and security committee, the ad hoc strategic planning committee and the ad hoc return to school committee. And whereas Mr. Franco has served the board as the liaison to the Warren Township Committee and the Wachong Hills Municipal Alliance. And whereas Mr. Franco has served the board as its alternative representative to the Somerset County Educational Services Commission. Whereas Mr. Franco has served the board as its president in 2021. And whereas Mr. Franco has established in the teaching staff, parent community and administrative team, a reputation of trustworthiness, fairness and commitment to the district's high standards. And whereas Mr. Franco has served as a chair, being for excellence in all areas with a focus on supporting the district's efforts to always build upon a foundation of student achievement. Now therefore be it resolved that the Warren Township Board of Education, on behalf of the entire Warren community, does hereby extend its sincere thanks and gratitude to Mr. Franco for his service to the children of Warren and does hereby wish him all the best in all of his future endeavors.
Yeah.
Yeah. It would be nice to have one. Could also. We're taking, you want to sit in here, moving? That's good. Do you want us to go behind?
Yeah.
That's normally. Okay. Normally we get this done to the very first.
Easy, Mrs. Keller.
We can see you on the screen.
Okay, now without the man.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bellish and Mrs. Clark for your service. We, we do appreciate it. And Aaron and I got elected together, so it's, it's kind of bittersweet. We come in, we leave together. It's, and I think your seat has been filled by four people. So, okay, moving on. The substitute shortages, Dr. Mingle.
Okay. Okay, I have two presentations to make tonight that are actually sort of related because they go along with the same theme, which is whatever we need to do to make sure that we can keep our students in school full days without a break. As you're seeing in districts all around our area, that is starting to fall a bit as districts are struggling with staffing and, and so on. So we're going to address all that here tonight. First, substitute shortages. So you've probably seen headlines like these all across the country, but certainly in our region about the dire shortage of substitutes, concerns that it's not going to get any better, how districts are trying to address that and handle it. And that's definitely true here as well. So what you can see on the screen right now is the data from this school year of the percentage of substitute requests we had, meaning there was a staff member absent who had a substitute. And how many of those were filled? And you can see the range there is not good. Max is out of fifty percent filled, which was the best that we could do in the month of November. And it doesn't seem to be getting in December for sure. And this has been a long-term problem. So as, this is my sixth year here, we addressed this problem in 2018 by raising substitute pay. We saw for a year, the numbers went up, back down. So this chart is meant to show that the problem, although it is extreme right now. We were five years, but we were talking about a substitute shortage problem when we were filling eighty to ninety percent of our substitute openings. And now we're talking about it at forty to fifty percent. So you can imagine what that means in a, in a classroom. So what happens when we can't get a substitute? Couple of things. One, right now, every more principals spend a significant amount of time working to put together a schedule that would work for a bad day. In some schools, that's as much as two hours before the students arrive, they're trying to patch together a plan to cover from different places. And I guess it was too loud. Okay. To come together with a plan that uses different people in the building to fill in the gaps where they need to. In certain places, we have to pull staff members from other assignments. So that might mean that a teacher who should be teaching basic skills is now teaching third grade for that day as a substitute, which means the basic skill session doesn't happen, which is obviously not an ideal situation. And so it has an impact on those other programs. And whenever we do have a substitute come in, they come in, they might sign up in the morning to, to come in to cover middle school phys ed. But by the time they get here, they're covering middle school phys ed or seventh grade science and something else, because we just have to use them in every moment of the day. So we're concerned about burnout, not only for our full-time staff, but also for the substitutes themselves. There are a lot of causes for this. COVID concerns on two different ends. There are a lot of substitutes who either they or somebody in their home have health conditions where they're concerned about coming into a school building. There are also substitutes who are concerned about having to wear a mask all day or to be vaccinated or show a, a test result. So it's on both sides of that spectrum. There's also concerns that the technology requirements, even now that we're back in person, because some students might be in quarantine or at a level that some substitutes don't feel comfortable managing. So there's all kinds of challenges there related to COVID. Economic conditions, when unemployment is low, we often see a problem with getting enough substitutes. But there might be other factors related to economy and other opportunities that might be out there now that maybe aren't typically available that are having an impact for some of our substitutes, including competition from other school districts. Adjustments to assignments, as I mentioned, some people might really like being a certain kind of substitute and they don't like being reassigned. And when they get reassigned day after day, they either stop coming or they, they, they don't answer the phone quite to the same extent. And then pay is always a consideration, which we'll talk about in a second. But one thing that's not driving it, which I wanted to make clear, is our staff. So the actual number of substitute requests, while up a little bit in November compared to last, or two years ago and four years ago, are generally the same place they were two years ago and four years ago. So this, the staff is coming to work. And I wanted to make that clear because there's a lot of rumors out there in other places that staff absences are the main problem. Our staff, you could probably ask any one of our teachers, they would say it's easier to be at work than to be out at work, because I have to put together subplans that may or not be covered. So our staff is coming to work. Of, of course, COVID plays a factor if somebody's a close contact or, or something else. But the driver is not increased staff absence right now, it's decreased substitute availability. So we implemented the model, which we've talked about at some meetings, where we bring together stakeholders from different groups that included representatives from the WTA, district staff members who are responsible for overseeing substitutes, recruiting, onboarding, building administrators from elementary and middle school and substitutes themselves. We verified what the goal should be for this program, including how we would measure our success months from now, which would include a comparison of the second half of the year compared to the first half of the year, the second half of this year compared to the second half of last year and substitute satisfaction. We surveyed our subs as part of this process to find out where we're starting from and where we're going to, will be a measure of how successful we are here. We identified the expectations of teachers, of administrators, of the substitutes themselves. We talked about what was going on in other places. And then we developed a series of recommendations that I'm going to divide into two sections. Things that the board needs to approve for them to go into effect, and that's on the agenda for the board's approval tonight, and things that we should do ourselves that don't require board approval. So here's the board level. We would like to change our subrates effective January first to a daily rate of $125. We landed that number because it's $5 more than the next highest in our region. That's just the, the blunt information of how we're approaching. I am a little bit concerned that there's a lot of community, community competition of everybody's going to edge just a little bit to try to get a little bit more. But we think that it's fair. The hourly rate is still relatively low compared to other opportunities out there in the economy right now. But so this is the largest single increase that I know of in the district. Last time we made the increase, it was only $5 a day. This is a pretty significant recommendation. Because we're raising the daily subrate, we also have to raise the long-term subrates, which is when people commit to doing an amount of days in a row for one job that's more than twenty, which you can see on the screen there. They go up by $25 as well for the substitute, long-term substitute, and the long-term parrot goes up a little bit more based on the responsibilities having grown so significantly in the COVID time for a paraprofessional. But what I'm really excited about beyond the daily pay is a series of incentive programs that we would like to launch that we think do two things. They recognize our existing substitutes for the work they've done all year long and the work they're going to do for the rest of the year. And they also recognize our existing employees who are our biggest fans and help us get the next batch of really great employees, not only for substitutes. So the first one we'd like to do is starting in January, any substitute who works at least fifty percent of the available days that month would receive an extra $200 at the end of the month. So in addition to their $125 a day, at the end of the month, they would get an extra $200 out of their check, sort of as a level of commitment bonus, if you will. We also want to do that retroactively. We have about twenty-three substitutes who have worked so far this year. We really need like forty in order to cover the daily subs. But in that group of twenty-three, there are two people who have worked eighty percent of the school days since the school year started. And there are several other people who have worked fifty percent or something. So we would like to give the people who have worked a quarter of the days, a $200 one-time bonus, half the days, four hundred and eight hundred for the people who have worked seventy-five percent of the days. And so it adds up to a total cost of the district of less than $4,000, but that amount of investment will mean a lot to the people who have been doing that work. We also would like to launch a recruitment bonus where when we identify a position as hard to fill, like a substitute or a bus driver or other jobs that we know are very difficult right now to find, that if one of our existing employees recommends the candidate who is successful for that job, they would receive a bonus, assuming that that substitute came and worked at least ten days between January and the end of the school year. And if it was for a full-time job, that they were successfully onboarded into the district and, and served in that position. This has been negotiated with the WTA, there's a sidebar on the agenda for approval that would make this formal. It's not a lot of money, but it is again reflective of the fact that when I meet with candidates before they come to a board agenda, almost all of them tell me that one of the reasons they applied is because somebody here told them it's a good place to be an educator. And so we want to recognize that for our existing employees. And then we also want to recruit our retirees. So the law says you can't work in the same district you retired from for a full year, but then you can. And so we are aggressively reaching out to people who retired two to five years ago and asking them to come back because they are great subs. They already know the school district, they know the families, and they would be really helpful people to have in our, in our buildings. We would do just a small bonus to, to help, you know, encourage people to get a little over the hump and, and do the process that it takes. On the operational side, we have a PR campaign, I'll kind of preview here in a second, that is already basically launched with a new website that was put up today on the district website about substitutes. We have been reaching out to local colleges and universities, our retirees, we've gone back to substitutes who have gone inactive to make sure we know why they've gone inactive and to see if we might be able to get them back into being active. Where we already have what I would call best-in-class support for onboarding of substitutes. So here, our substitutes go through an interview at a school and then they are paid to spend a day shadowing in a school before they start taking on their own assignments, which I don't know of other places that really do that. What we'd like to do is increase the amount of time that they are paid to stay in that same school, so they can get really comfortable with one place. And then we can gradually introduce them to the other schools in the district. Because it's a lot easier to say yes to the request when you know where you're going and you know somebody in that building and you feel like you're welcome there. We're also, we've already extended our part-time staff, so several of our multi-duty paraprofessionals are staying, coming before lunch and staying after lunch and working as substitutes for those hours, which was already allowed by our policy. We've, we're looking into whether or not to require all of our paraprofessionals to be sub-certified so that they can fill in when there are needs. It's not the ideal solution because they have another role that they're supposed to be playing at that time. And we're going to continue surveying our subs to make sure we know exactly how things are going, which of these things are working and which ones aren't. Financial impact is essentially net zero. The fact that we're not covering the subs right now means we're not spending our substitute budget, so we can pull from our existing budget to pay for these programs. So there's no changes to the bottom line of the budget to make this happen. You'll see on the website, as of earlier this afternoon, there's a new, we replaced the referendum information with a substitute information. You'll see on the website, as of earlier this afternoon, there's a new, we replaced the referendum information with a substitute information. When you go to that page, it's got a summary of everything I just said, as well as contact information for Sandy Dodd in the board office who walks people through every step of the process to get a sub certificate and get started here. And we have our P R campaign. There's no substitute for great substitutes that we're launching, which goes through the key information that I just kind of talked about and that we can get out there on our website and other kinds of communications. And just let people in the area know that, you know, we're really serious about trying to address this the best we can. I don't want to overstate the impact. We're going to still have trouble throughout the rest of the substance. But we think this is a is a step in the right direction. So that's, I'll stop there. Keep questions, but I'd really like to ask the board for its support in in those proposals tonight.
Any questions from board members? Mr. Brazil. Good presentation. Thank you. The question about the two hundred dollar bonus, I guess. It's a rather small group this might apply for, but is there an opportunity to consider maybe instead of two hundred dollars, four hundred dollar credit towards this great summer fund program we have down the road for I don't expect it tonight, but just it increases and it's, I mean, minimal cost to the district at that point, given we run the program.
Yeah, we we're definitely open to other kinds of strategies. Yeah, it's worth a consideration.
Is there any incentive that we can offer our current staff or perfect attendance? Maybe it's by month, fairly two months. And I'm not, I'm not, everyone has things that come up. I I don't have perfect attendance myself, so I'm not. I don't mean that.
Well, so we've actually looked into that. A couple of years ago, we looked, we got pretty far down the path for a certain group of employees. But the problem, especially in the COVID environment, is we don't want people to feel like they're being incentivized to come to work sick because we don't want people to come to work sick. So we've stayed away from that for now, maybe in different conditions, or maybe there's, maybe it's not perfect, but it's something else. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, so you know, I want to move on to.
We'll load the next one. Okay, so I'm also really excited to present some recommendations to make some fairly significant changes to our quarantine and test to stay recommend procedures and protocols. And some of this has changed throughout the day today as we've worked in committees and the governor and the health commissioner made some announcements late this afternoon that sort of changes some of the the calculus here. But basically, I'm going to chart three different proposals that are all embedded in one motion on the agenda, which is a change to our close contact quarantine effective immediately. The ability to implement a test to stay protocol effective the day the state says it's allowed. And a change to our travel quarantine policy effective immediately. So one of the first questions I just want to get off right from the beginning is why would you make changes that seem to make it easier to be in school when you're sick at a time when the cases are so high? So first of all, I want to recognize that the cases are so high. It's not just conjecture. There are more cases as of today, December twentieth in Warren and in the school district than any other month of the pandemic. And we still have eleven days to go in this month. That's obviously a problem. The good news, though, is that the cases among vaccinated and Warren has the highest rate of vaccinated adults in Somerset County. Is that the cases are not as serious, at least for most of the people who are vaccinated, although they are very serious for some people. And they're definitely serious for our unvaccinated individuals who are going home sick right now. But we are confident that those cases are not coming from the school district. And we know that from the way the contact trust tracing takes place. And so although the cases are high, they do not appear to be originating in our schools. In fact, I would argue that being in school is probably the safest place to be right now because of our mitigation efforts. And that's masks distancing and washing and the protocols we use when a positive case comes to our attention. And this is database. So one of the things we've tried and Mr. Franklin talked about in his comments. We've tried to be really careful when we make recommendations to not make them until we were confident that the facts supported us and the data supported us. We did a deep dive into our data on quarantines. And we found that of, at the time that we calculated this a week ago, the number is higher now, but at the time we calculated a week ago, we had quarantined two hundred and three students over the course of the last year and a half due to being in close contact in school. And of those students, only three ever tested positive for COVID, one point five percent. So although that's what's required by the state, it doesn't seem to make sense based on the data of what's actually happening with our students. And I know that for the parents who get that call, the dreaded call of you need to come pick up your child for the next fourteen days, it has huge implications on your on the family. And so we wanted to know what the what the data was telling us. And the data is telling us that if kids come to school with masks on and they wear them appropriately throughout the day, they stay the right distance apart that they're supposed to. They're not going to have COVID because of an in school transmission most of the time. It can't say there's never going to be an exception, but that is not what we're seeing right now. We've also, by the way, reduced significantly the number of close contacts. So when there is a positive case right now with close contacts, it's usually one or two. There are exceptions in certain programs, but we're not really seeing a lot of kids going out as close contacts right now because of our approaches. So the timeline on what has transpired to make us make this recommendation now and kind of rush it to the board on short notice. Last week, the C D C updated its quarantine guidance on the fifteenth. The next day, the Department of Health updated its guidance. The basic gist of that update was that we could go back to the green and yellow level of quarantining, meaning it doesn't have to be fourteen full days. It can go back down to being seven to ten, depending on the condition for testing. On December seventeenth, on Friday, the C D C updated its test to stay guidance and said that that was allowed at the C D C level. I asked on Friday, our legal team and the health commissioner, we were not allowed, the New Jersey has not approved it, but as of today, the governor seems to suggest it's coming. Today, we convened in one meeting, normally we spread this out over a couple of days so that we can vet it. We brought together our wellness subcommittee, our return to school committee, our leadership team. And we vetted this over the weekend through the ad hoc return to school committee on the board to make these updated expedited updates because they affect families for how they approach their winter break. We know that the, as I mentioned, the health commission, the governor have suggested this is coming in January for the state and we want to be ready to be among the first to implement the test of state procedures. So we're proposing that new quarantine guidelines go into effect tomorrow. As do the new travel guidelines and the test to stay option goes into effect the day the state tells us we're allowed to put into effect. So let me explain what all those things are. Our philosophy in these recommendations is simple. We want kids in school. That's the best place for them to be. We all know that. That's the case. You know, common sense tells us that's the case and our data tells us that's the place to. When kids are getting COVID, it's because they're not in school. And when they have to stay home and parents have to scramble to get childcare and other things, they wind up in more risky COVID situations instead of less risky COVID situations. The D O H and the C D C in their update last week remind us that the incubation period for COVID is two to fourteen days, which is why they still recommend fourteen days as the ideal gold standard for quarantine, if you can do it in a way that doesn't impact everything else. Just a couple of important definitions. Fully vaccinated, which is important for some of these things, means fourteen days since the end of the of the series of vaccines. The C D C is indicating that at some point they may increase that to include a booster requirement, but right now that's not part of the definition. Recently recovered from COVID means within the last ninety days. So it's the ninety day window from the day you take the test until the day that the incident happens, you're not required to quarantine already under those guidelines if you're recently recovered. Given the strict adherence to mitigation in schools with masks and everything else I've talked about, we are confident that we can shift to these lowered quarantine levels immediately. Meaning that students right now who are in quarantine for fourteen days can go down to seven if they had a negative test on days five through seven or ten days if they didn't go for a negative for a test. We've already let parents in that situation know this afternoon that we can bring them back to school, assuming that we have approval tonight. And we're we're confident that this will be a good, safe approach and gets kids back to school sooner. So just to summarize what that means for different groups. Vaccinated individuals, no change. There's no changes to vaccinated individuals, vaccinated individuals are already not required to quarantine under state and federal rules. They are asked to test days five through seven of their close contact to make sure they're negative. And during that period, they're asked to wear masks everywhere, not just in school for fourteen days, even though they're vaccinated in the community. I don't think that that message has gotten out as clearly as we want it to. But if you're vaccinated and identified as a close contact, the recommendation is you're wearing a mask at all times. And in what we do in school for those individuals, which is mostly at the middle school right now, but we're hitting the window where elementary school students are becoming fully vaccinated is that we have a separate place for them to eat lunch so that they're not anywhere in close contact range of another student. Of course, we want them back in the cafeteria as soon as possible, but for this small window of time when they are in this transmission period, we isolate them a little bit more during those risky moments. No changes to fully recover. They are also not expected to quarantine. They monitor for symptoms. And then if they become symptomatic, they move into the other protocol as a symptomatic individual. The change here is for unvaccinated individuals. And I mentioned that the adult population in Warren is number one in the county for vaccines. But the twelve to seventeen year olds are almost last. And so I would just implore parents, if you've been waiting for a vaccine, please consider now is the time to do it. We are making some changes for unvaccinated students, but certainly we know from the data of the students who are getting COVID that it's a better and faster outcome for those that have been vaccinated. So while there are only two communities in Somerset County with a lower rate of vaccination for twelve to seventeen year olds than Warren. So for unvaccinated individuals, we will basically return to the green and yellow status. That is what the state is allowing, which means you have two options. If you take a test on days five to seven and it's negative, you can come back after day seven. If you choose not to take a test, you have to wait ten days, but no more fourteen days. So it cuts at least four days off of that window, which is really helpful. Okay, moving on to test to stay. So that's, we can do that now on the existing criteria. Test to stay is sort of the next phase that I imagine we'll see in schools all across the country in the near future. Essentially, it is a contact tracing and testing program where we identify who the close contacts were. And then we create for school close contacts only a way to keep them in school even during their quarantine by testing them on a regular basis. This is already being done in several states in the United States. The C D C on Friday published the results of studies in California and Illinois. And they also cited studies from Europe that show it to be extremely effective at keeping kids in school without a subsequent spread of COVID. We're asking on in a agenda item tonight for the state to expedite the allowance of this for districts that are ready to implement it. We can implement this as soon as the day after winter break, if we have approval to do it based on our preparations. Our local data says, as I said earlier, that only one point five percent of our students who would fit into this into the close contacts ever get COVID. So we're pretty confident that this is a small group of students and we should keep them in school if we can. The use of the test to stay protocol depends on parental consent. They have to give active consent because of the testing procedures. And they will have to commit to strictly adhering to the rest of the guidance that comes from the state and the C D C. Again, keeping students in school facilities are top priority. One really big caveat to everything I say about test to stay is the state hasn't authorized it yet. And so we don't know what rules are going to attach to it. This is based on what we've read about from other states. Why now? I talked about this a little bit, but I'll just go through it again. Schools appear to be among the safest places in the community. Our data suggests that students are not transmitting COVID in schools for the most part. That is true in most schools, although there are some districts in our immediate area, especially at lunch where there's been spread going on. That's not our case because of how we have lunch set up. Our mitigation strategies are working. We don't have a lot of close contact individuals. We importantly have secured through a local vendor who's a Warren resident and a strong supporter of the school district, the testing materials we need to implement this. So that's extremely important. That's going to be a problem when this starts rolling out is getting the testing, the quantity that you need. We want to keep students in school as long as we can do so safely. And it incentivizes mitigation strategies because in order for the students to be part of this program, their parents have to commit to following the rules that go along with it. We also know that this change has the support of our committees. This was unanimously supported by our district return to school committee and our leadership team, which includes our union leaders for both the teachers and the administrators. We're all we're all in on the on the commitment to getting the kids in school and keeping them in school. And we think this is a safe way for us to do it. The costs, while not nothing, is manageable. This is the reason why the government provided COVID relief funds is for things like this. It will cost us eight dollars and fifty cents based on the current test that we have access to per student per day that we need to test them. We're not talking about a lot of kids on a daily basis that we would have to do the testing for. This isn't a really even equation, but in my opinion, that cost in dollars and cents is less than the cost to the families of their students not being in school, to the students themselves and not being in school and to our staff because it's very difficult on the staff as well. It's not a dollars to dollars comparison. It's a dollars to social emotional well being. And and we think that we can get the kids in school and it costs us eight fifty a day per student who's in this group, then that's what we should do. All right, who is it for? It's very narrow. This is for unvaccinated individuals who are close contacts of a school case. That's it. It's vaccinated individuals and those who have already recovered are already covered by other protocols that keep them in school. This is for unvaccinated school based close contacts. It is not for symptomatic students of any kind. You can't keep coming to school if you have symptoms. You go into the quarantine protocol if you have symptoms. It's also not for students who are close contacts of cases outside of school. I just want to address that because that's going to be the really important one for parents. When students are close contacts of cases at sleepovers, at community organizations, traveling, they wind up getting COVID. It's the students who are close contacts in school that don't, and that's because of the masking and the other mitigation. So we are not going to allow close contacts of outside of school cases because we don't know the conditions around that close contact. And it's a much higher risk to the rest of the school community. What does it require? Again, this is based on what we know now. This could change when the state issues its guidelines. We, the district, will do this, the testing. As of right now, we're recommending that to be every other day. And there's a couple of reasons why. So that means that on you find out you're a close contact. If that happened today, Monday, tomorrow would be day one, the student would be tested with a rapid test. It takes fifteen minutes to get the result. It is a nasal swab. It'll be read by a nurse. They'll be held in a in a location until the negative test comes and then they'll go about their day. The reason we're recommending it on days one, three, five and seven is because the C D C study that was strictest, that was what they did. There are some states like Vermont that require it every single day instead of every other day. The tests that we have access to, they their manufacturer doesn't recommend giving the test more than once every thirty-six hours. And so that's kind of where we are right now, but this is dependent on what the state eventually issues. That's where we are right now. Parents have to commit to following quarantine when they're not at school. This is going to be the biggest hurdle to getting people to actually do the test to stay protocol. Test to stay means you only go to school. That's it. It means you don't go to your friends' houses and parties and community events where masking may not be taking place. That's the commitment. If school is the priority and keeping kids in school is a priority, the only way that we can manage that safely is if we know that everybody's following the rules outside of school who's in this. If people don't want to do that, that's fine, but then they'll be in the regular quarantine protocol for that time period. But if you want students to stay in school, the commitment from all the states that have done it before has been you need to strictly follow the rules when you're outside of school. We are thinking right now, although we have a lot of work to do on the protocol, that the students would be driven to school, not on the school bus. We don't want to find out that they became positive and then have to quarantine more kids from the school bus. That during this window, the student would be driven to school. Right now, we only have approval at one site to do COVID testing. So probably they would come to the middle school on some, and some of you have probably been through this, where you go to a drive through testing location. That's what we would do. And once they were cleared, they go off to school and they'd have the rest of their school day. We have a lot of work to do on the on the procedures. Once we know what the state says, but that's where we are for right now. And then, as I mentioned, when masks are off during lunch and snack, students will be further apart. And then one of the questions that has come up a few times is why would this be for unvaccinated? And I know we're all watching and seeing that the vaccinated case races are rates are going up as well. The C D C and the Department of Health already have another protocol for vaccinated individuals. They haven't changed that recommendation. If they do, we would as well, but they have not at this point. The emerging research about Omicron, and this is very emerging. I don't have any information that the general public can't read about on on your own. But the emerging research that the C D C is putting out says that fully vaccinated individuals, even when they're positive, have a lower viral wrote viral load and are contagious for less amount of time, which may be one of the reasons why they haven't changed the recommendations for vaccinated. Of course, we will adjust if we get new guidance. So just to summarize, still no change for vaccinated. Still no change for fully recovered. Still no change for close contacts outside of school. If you're a close contact outside of school, you still go into the quarantine for the seven to ten days. The big change is for a school based close contact where we know exactly what happened. Students would not have to quarantine as long as parents were okay with them being as part of the test to stay protocol. And then finally, we are also proposing a change to our travel guidelines that's related to the data again. So the state still recommends that individuals who are not fully vaccinated avoid travel while they're not vaccinated. So there's nothing on the slide that's new. This is what the state has always said. But they have now made this a voluntary thing as opposed to saying telling. This is what the state has always said, but they have now made this a voluntary thing as opposed to saying, telling schools to enforce it. As you may remember, we actually stopped enforcing it for domestic travel last summer. And we never brought it back when the state started suggesting it again. We are proposing that we would no longer require unvaccinated students to, to quarantine based on travel. Because the data of the students who are traveling where we're all internationally, which is where we were holding them back, have not come back and wound up positive. So based on our local data and these new protocols we have in place, we believe that it's, it's time for us to take away that restriction as well. Um, we would encourage them, we're not allowed to require it. We would encourage them to take a PCR test three to five days after travel and to monitor symptoms. But that would be us just trying to help parents do, and, and our parents have been great about providing by that when we recommended it. So, uh, are these changes final? No, these changes are final to the extent that we have control over them. Quarantine, we have total control over, and that's already allowed by Department of Health guidelines, as is the travel. Test to stay is based on what we think. We don't know what the state is going to say. We just want to be ready for it when the time comes for us to implement it. Uh, if there are in the future, we are concerned about supply of antigen testing. If all of a sudden hundreds of thousands of students in, in the state are allowed to do this, there's going to be a run on those test kits. We're doing our best to stockpile a bit, but there may come a time where we have to pause it because of testing availability. And really important, if our cases go up. Inordinately, or we start to see in-school transmission, we would pause the program and make sure that we're not creating the problem. So just like we're bringing this program to you based on our data, we would stop the program if the data suggested it wasn't working the way we thought it was going to. So in summary, we recommend reducing quarantine periods effective immediately. Eliminating the travel quarantine effective immediately. And preparing to implement a test to stay protocol as soon as the state tells us we're allowed to. Just want to thank, um, the return to school committee and the members of the teams who spent last Thursday, Friday and the weekend. Really getting up to speed on this to make sure we were ready for a recommendation. I'll pause there, take any, I'll actually come back to the, the essential questions. Thank you.
So, you know, in my president's remarks, I talked about. Well, for the test today, I have to.
Yep.
So if someone who's seen a close contact that is vaccinated. Does not have to test to stay, that they are allowed to come into school. Even though we have evidence that, that there are significant amount of breakthrough cases. They are allowed in school while an unvaccinated person can maybe exposed. Uh, somewhere else, you're saying has to quarantine. Even though if they tested negative, they would be less of a risk in the school than the vaccinated kid who's exposed and is not quarantined. So from a logic standpoint, it just doesn't make any sense. Right? So I, I have, I have an issue with, with the restrictions on testing to stay only if. The exposure was within school. It, it, because it's, you're taking these kids who potentially are not sick. Can verify it through a test. And saying, well, because we didn't, you didn't, you weren't exposed in school, you can't test to stay and come to school. And I think that's, I think that's wrong. I don't know, other board members feelings on that, but I, I, I think if there's a test to stay component. Then those students should be willing, that are willing to test should be, so if they show up in the morning, I test, I test negative, I go to school. I, I don't understand why you would not allow that if you don't, if you're not able to understand the, the contact truth.
Right, yeah, so there's two different issues there. The one, um, the one about vaccinated not being required to test to stay. I, I, I hear you on that, and I think because now there are more breakthrough cases with the new variant. Um, I wouldn't be surprised if at some point the CDC or the state changes that, but that's the current guidance from those. But I understand what you're saying. That's not us making that up, but that's, uh, what's coming there. The, the other, the, the piece about the out of school exposure, uh, that one is based on data and logic. Because those are the cases that convert to positive. So when we learn about an out of school close contact, there's a much higher chance that that student winds up positive than the in-school close context. So we're comfortable. And I understand what you're saying, well, they would be negative that morning, but there's, it's not foolproof, right? So a negative antigen test at nine o'clock in the morning doesn't mean, you know. The next day it's positive and now you have a day of exposure. We think that's very rarely going to happen with the in-school contacts, but would be much more common with, with the out of school. That's why it's separate there.
Yeah, I mean, what, what are the numbers to support it?
I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but, but.
I, I, I would, I would challenge that assertion. That someone who tests negative through an in-school contact is, is less likely to, to actually test positively. If, if someone's testing negative, you should let them go to school then. Regardless of what the exposure. And, and remember, if it's an out of school exposure, it's something that they've disposed to the school. Right? Which is, which is, you know, who's, who's doing that? You know, honestly, people are not, um. You know, hopefully people are disposing if they've been exposed in some way. But I'm sure many people aren't. So you're, now you're thinking someone is being honest about their exposure and penalizing them. When in fact, they could just test in the morning and say, yeah, we were exposed. Let's test the kid in the morning, he tests negative, you're shooting, stay, it's not, go home. I don't understand the, the, the elimination of cohort of, of students.
We don't have, so the CDC studies were definitely with school-based contacts, as are the other states that do it. So we don't have. Data from other places that have already tried it. I don't know what the state will say, but based on what everybody else who's done it has, it's been only for school-based contacts.
Is there any restriction for most of the limited today on?
Well, right now, there's not, right now, we can't do it at all.
Can't do it at all, but is there any restriction if we wanted to have a?
We could always do more.
Oh, yeah, I don't know what we're supporting on this, but.
The restriction would be capacity. So in-school close contacts, we know is single digits per day we would have to worry about. If it became like right now. I mean.
Well, we have the numbers off of the, the daily disclosure. As to how many people are, are, are claiming exposure. We know what those numbers are.
But, but, but that's my point. So that might be, it could be thirty or it could be four or five fold the number of in-school. And so the capacity of testing all those kids would be.
Yes, yes, you know what those numbers are.
No, I don't have that up my head, because that's not what we've been researching, but that could be a follow-up.
We do have, we do have those numbers. We do have, we know how many kids on a daily basis are checking the box. How many parents check the box?
Yeah, right, right, right.
Kid was exposed to someone that tested positive or whatever the three main factors are.
Yep.
Right? So we would know that, well.
Yeah.
And if it's, if it's catastrophically high and it becomes a, uh. A materials issue, you don't have enough tests to test. I get that. But if the number is not very high, and it hasn't been historically, then I don't see any reason we should exclude those kids from the test. And I would, I would ask that we modify the policy to, to. To include those trips. Again, I love the.
But is it dependent on what the state tells us the test and state program can be as far as? Who we test and who we don't, i.e. In-school contacts or cases versus out of school? And I guess the question is, if that is the case, then do we even have the liberty to go down the path you're talking about? And, and I don't know, this is, this is a question, we really don't know.
Yep.
Because they may force our hand and say, hey, this is the test and state program. You either take it or you leave it. You have zero leeway to be able to do exactly what you're talking about. And I don't know, we'll have to wait to see what their pilot suggestion is.
And we could always, just thinking ahead. We want to be able to be, the way they turned, they termed it today is that they were going to launch a pilot program. We want to be in a position to be part of that pilot program. Um, we could always expand beyond if, you know, if there are further.
Version two point O.
Totally, yeah. Uh, because our, the theory is we want as many kids in school as we can possibly get, as long as we can do it safely. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just right, Mr. Mingle, Dr. Mingle, do you mind if I just step through like one of the?
Oh, yeah, of course.
So we have a close contact in ALT, let's say. And we narrow down, and that person is unvaccinated. Did they have to then get in their parent's car and drive to middle school to get tested immediately when they find out that they've had a close contact?
No, good question. So a couple of things. One, the going to the middle school thing is based on the way we're currently interpreting, interpreting. The waiver, so there's a, there are certification requirements to be able to do medical testing at a facility. Many months ago, proactively, we went through that process for the middle school. Just in case in the future we were able to. It take, it took like six weeks. So right now, the middle school is the only site where we can do that testing. So that's why we're saying the middle school. They wouldn't have to go immediately. It's that you would go, you would, uh, the guidance like for Vermont, Vermont. Anybody can look it up on their website, they have extremely detailed procedures. There they say you finish up that school day.
We do.
We know that the, the incubation period is usually not that fast. But if the next day you would take your first test and then either every day or every other day, depending on what they, the rules are.
So we, we find out about it Monday.
Yeah.
Um, and then the unvaccinated student has his parents drive him to middle school on Tuesday. Thursday and the following Monday.
Something like that.
Something like that, yeah, three times.
Yeah.
And then do you get the, uh, release from the parent or the sign on to the? Is, is that some of the, the entire population of parents sign on?
No, we would only want it. That's a good question. So I can't say for sure at this point, but I, what we're thinking is it would be. A point in time consent, because we want to make sure that they are agreeing to everything that goes along with it.
Right.
Because again, this is a burden on a family, obviously, because you have to get the student to a testing site each of these times. And, uh, which means you're not using our transportation. But that allows us to keep the student off the bus. And if it comes back positive, they've never come into the building if we do it outside and they can just go right home. So it is a burden on families, which we get, um.
Oh, I should have said that, and they're not taking the bus for seven days.
And they wouldn't be taking the bus for that entire window.
Got it, got it.
Yep.
And then just the other question that the eight dollars and fifty cents and you have the availability of the tests, that can come out of COVID funds from the federal government, right? That's not something that we incur.
Right, I mean, it's.
As long as it lasts, as long as, as long as the funding lasts, right?
Yeah, so I would just say it's not from this, right now. If the state launches this program until, they might launch money to go along with it, which would be great, assuming they don't. It would come, we could spend it from our COVID funds, but as you know, we've talked about lots of things to spend that money on. So it would come from some version of local funds, whether that's federal funds or local funds.
But yes, we clearly it's not coming.
No, 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 so we wouldn't be asking the parents to pay the eight dollars and fifty cents.
And then, so if it, it does, so funds on the issue, then the, it's just the availability of the test, that's more of an issue, right? Like, yes, can we stockpile enough to kind of keep, keep ahead of the game?
And, and this is a tricky line, right? Because we want to be ready, but we also don't want to buy the wrong, who knows? The state might come in and say, you can't use that test, you have to use this other test. Or they might say, we're just going to give you that. So we don't want to spend thousands of dollars and then, so we're trying to have enough that we could get started without going to, it's tricky.
Uh, yeah.
We're very lucky to have a local vendor, uh, again, who is a, a Warren resident and is able to give this at cost. We're not talking about anything fancy, by the way. We're talking about the kind of test that we can all buy now for home test. That's, that's all that's required for this. Yep.
So I just have another question. So B seven is this, right? So are we voting tonight on the? The idea or the theory, whatever we want to call it, of, of backing the pilot? Or, and/or, like you said in your presentation, I think the most difficult part of this for families and parents is the fact that. If your kid resides in that, that unvaccinated group that, that tests negative, they can go to school, but it's school and that's it, right? No after-school done. If and when a family is quote unquote found out to have violated that. Are we voting on that protocol of what happens with that student and that family tonight as part of B seven? Or is that to be looked at at a later date, once this pilot is approved for the state of Jersey? And then we get into the particulars.
Yeah, good question. So, so let me just kind of differentiate the two items on the agenda as well. So B seven is us asking the state to allow test to stay.
Okay.
Which was on here before all this stuff happened over the weekend. B eight is asking the board to say, we're okay and we support these updated changes. And that we would get into a test to stay program as soon as it becomes available. We could come back to the details. We want to be able to kind of keep the ball rolling, if you will.
But this B eight does not sort of follow the details.
That's right.
Yeah, so hypothetically, let's say the state signs off, I don't know, January third, right? The first day back to school or first Monday, right? I guess then it's up to the board, right? To come up with whatever those detailed repercussions would be in, in the example that I brought? Or, or how is that going to?
I mean, those are really kind of administrative, but I'm sure we would talk about them here as soon as we have the guidance. You know, we, we talked about these things like in our committee meetings of how do we met? Whatever you put in place, you have to police.
Sure.
And so we don't, our goal is to get kids to school. Uh, and we want, but we, but it's also to do it safely. And so as much as we want to get students who right now have to quarantine for two weeks back to school. We also have to respect everybody else who's in school who might be concerned about riding the bus or being in a classroom with somebody who has potential exposure. So we definitely have to think through it from all those angles and talk about it more here.
Okay.
All you're really authorizing is that we would get involved in this pilot. What I presented tonight is our best guess based on the information we have now. Hopefully on January third, we can talk about it some more.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, I would just reiterate that, uh, going back to logic, given the percentage of breakthrough cases that we've seen. Having vaccinated people in this school district that have known exposure posed just as very little risk. If not more so than, than maybe not more so, but just as very little risk, probably more so than it, than the kid who tests negative in the morning.
Yeah.
I, I, because they're not being tested at all.
So just.
The theory, twenty percent of those kids could be walking around positive, but they're not being tested.
So we are tracking that data now. So we will know in the next few weeks of, um, vaccinated close contacts. In the very beginning, that wasn't something that was tracked because it was in the summer.
Well, you're tracking in-school transmissions, I'm saying in general, about their daily lives. A, a, a kid may be exposed outside of school and be positive for the virus or breakthrough case, even if he's vaccinated. But we would never know because the kid's not sick, he's not being tested, and he wasn't an in-school exposure. So we just wouldn't know.
So the only exception I just want to point out is that vaccinated individuals are expected to test in the five to seven day window, even though they're coming to school. So there is one test, that's a PCR test. Well, they're told to do that for non-school exposure by the health department as well, but we don't. To your point, we don't know, we don't know.
Not too good, too far down that hell rabbit hole, but. Aren't the breakthrough cases in more of the adult populations that they've been tracking? Because the element, at least for the elementary school kids. They barely have been able to be fully vaccinated anyway. So they're not in terms of the breakthrough cases. We haven't even gotten past that point where we would have that, right?
We have had, we have had some, though. We, we, we have had some student breakthrough cases.
And maybe the older, okay.
Yeah, so I, we don't have enough students and enough fully vaccinated students to have really good robust data, but it's not zero.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think too, and correct me if I'm wrong, the challenge is that the data that you cited in the presentation is based on in-school exposure and not out of.
That's what we have.
So.
Yep.
I agree, the data should lead and hopefully that's an unbiased source, but if we don't have the data to support what you're talking about, Mr. Franco. It's, it's tough to make that assertion, because the study wasn't based on the protocol you're talking about.
Yeah, there are plenty of people that are walking around probably.
Yeah, yeah, right.
That's the nature of this virus.
Sure.
Right? So you can put all the protocols in place you want.
Yeah, you don't know.
The risk is never going to be zero.
Sure, sure.
Right? So I'm just, I'm only saying, let's be fair, let's be, you know.
I hear you.
And if the kid, whether regardless of where they, or how they were exposed. If they test negative in the morning, vaccinated or unvaccinated, there should be a lot in the school. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Is, is there anything that we can do from our perspective, assuming that the board today approves this to make sure that we're well positioned to be able to take advantage of the pilot? If it occurs, so like as an example, you know, can we proactively reach out to the Somerset County Department of Health and say? You know, our board has proactively approved test to stay, provided that, um, you know, a pilot exists there. I, I just wonder if there's things we can do in that regard to position Warren Township to be able to, um, hopefully be part of that pilot to the extent one exists.
Yeah, thank you. So that is one of the reasons why this is on the agenda, because the, the B seven motion has us reach out to our elected officials and the state. To make sure that they know that we support this and we want them to expedite it. And B eight adds on a, another layer of like, we're ready to go. And so we will make sure that's clear. It's definite, it's definitely clear to, uh, our local health official. You know, I've talked about it numerous times. He's not allowed to say yes until the state says yes. Uh, and we also, um, had a contact. I don't know that it got all the way there, but we had it, we got, we finally found a contact in the governor's office and we've gone through that chain as well to try to get it to the governor's office. Uh, I think the commissioner's visit was very productive. I can't say that that led to them talking about it, but it was very clear when she left that meeting that we were. Ready to go and, and we wanted this to be an option.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
So I think it's, we wanted.
One last, so I think to Mr. Weinstein's point, I think B eight draws the box of what we can do as being allowed by the CDC. So like maybe next meeting, we can talk about.
Expanding.
Or whether, Mark, Mr. Franco, your, uh, you know, um. Suggestion may not be within the CDC guidelines, we could talk about that at the next meeting or whatever.
If it's not. Obviously, I'm not going to be around to have input on the, the details of it. I'm just pretty much just sitting now before I'm not able to.
This channel is your spirit.
You could sign into the meeting and participate.
And I may.
I agree with Mark, I won't be here any longer, but I do, I agree, I agree with that.
So I hope that at least maybe this discussion needs to further.
Yeah.
So I, I would be in support of B eight today, um, with the, with the hope that we can.
Just expand.
Just be logical about the whole thing, right? That's that's what's been missing through this whole this whole process. And and not from from us. It's it's, you know, when we're following rules established by others who are just making like the rules, which I understand they have to because it's a, you know, they're covering such a big um, area, but something just don't. They say government should be local. It should be. Okay, moving on to committee reports.
So. I have two actually. Um, Personnel Committee met on December fifteenth to discuss the proposal for the substitute shortages, which presentation you have seen um, together with the W T E A sidebar that is related to that. Uh, those items appear on tonight's agenda for approval, uh, C eight, C nine, and C ten. That's really all for that. Uh, it did enjoy the committee's uh, approval, unanimous approval. On Wednesday, November twenty fourth, which in fact was after our last meeting of the boards. Uh, there was a meeting between administration and the W T E F representatives of the W T E F. I was there as the board's liaison. It was an extremely productive meeting and um, I just want to pass on share with the whole board that uh, although it has taken some time through the efforts of the uh, board of the W T E F, they have secured their five oh one C three status certificates and bank accounts have been opened. And that they are continuing to work on their social media presence, including the website. And uh, there was a further discussion about how W T E F would interact with the district P T Os and the their funding sources and what that would look like. And that is a developing conversation. But I do want to say that it was it was productive and uh, you know, I certainly am looking forward to seeing twenty twenty two have a lot of progress with what the W T E F is um, attempting to do.
The Finance Operations and Security Committee met on Monday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty one. Items we discussed uh, included the um, grade eight field trip. Uh, note, there's it's not overnight planned at this point, given where we are with COVID. At this point. The wise methodology was used for this, which I thought was a great input to get all the stakeholders together. Uh, there was an update from Mrs. Zon as she just gave air regarding the W T E F. I will repeat that. Uh, the referendum election, although this was the day before, we were planning for either scenario and I'm happy to report since it's been numerous times, it passed with what looks like seventy seven point one one percent. So uh, thank you to administration for all of your help with that. Unfortunately, now is when the real work starts, so. We're here to support that as well. Discuss the recent weather events, uh, meaning floods and the potential rains, whatever it was that Warren had back in uh, early in the year, which we had school for a day or two and got mowed off. So we just wanted to circle back with facilities to make sure that there was uh, we were missing in terms of making the buildings safe, secure, and worthy spaces for education. We did go through a summer fund analysis that included a five year overview of the finances. Looked at an initial plan for the summer of twenty twenty two with uh, summer fund. Revisited our budget calendar. Um, and that was it. We uh, spent the last forty five minutes thanking Mr. Bellish and Mr. Franco for all the contributions. It might have been close to the half hour or maybe an hour, but uh, as a chair, I would say it's been an honor to work with you both. So thank you for all of your contributions and look forward to joining Zoom meetings in the future.
We would expect nothing less.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, so the Curriculum and Communications and Technology Committee we met uh, Wednesday, December eighth from six to seven. Uh, bulk of our conversation uh, had to do with our June discussion notes on Zoom access to board meetings. Previous to the meeting, Dr. Mingle had gotten some updated guidance from Matt Jacoby. And we have come up with as a committee, an updated recommendation for January twenty twenty two. Where we will recommend continuing the public in-person meetings with live access. Um, video Zoom with public commentary permitted um, through the end of this school year with, of course, strict adherence to board norms of accepting comments without engaging in a Q and A format. And should the emergency budget regulations um, governing public meetings change, the board will revisit uh, this particular practice. Uh, then the other part of our meeting was we had a dashboard update, uh, which was fun. Mark had a lot of fun. He did love it. Um, the committee discussed the organization of the da- uh, the dashboard and we kind of felt that there should be a focus on student achievement. And maybe it should be um, organized kind of by year. Uh, that was it. Thank you.
You did.
I guess you have to run again.
Yeah.
I'm going to blame Mrs. Lenhart. She's not here.
They just couldn't fit everything.
I guess we were trying to forget that.
Maybe.
Everyone on the committee said you were not.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Any other committee reports? All right, moving on to public commentary. It's the first of two public commentary sections. Uh, we'll take your comments first. Uh, anyways, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. And I will call upon you. You have uh, three minutes.
Did you see me? I didn't hear you.
I'm not hearing you. Hang on one second.
Did you hear? Can you hear me?
No, Maria, it's all we don't hear.
Let me turn my volume up. How about now? How about now?
Right on my computer. Wait, hang on, hang on one second.
All right, can you hear me now?
You gotta go unmute. We have, we have volume in the room.
Hello?
Maria, just hang on. That's what I do. Everyone has to mute. Everyone's on Zoom.
Yeah, right, right.
Hello? Hello? You still can't hear me? That's a bummer. I was going to tell you all that. I appreciate. It's working now. Ah, that was a horrible sound for people in there.
All right.
You can hear me? Okay, so I have um, one question about the test to stay. There's also something in there uh, the community update about the swab test. Like being like able for students being eligible to participate in the swab test. And I didn't understand like why, like per, I I I just wanted more information about that before I like signed off on saying, yes, I'd like my student to participate in that. Second thing is that oftentimes, like when I've had to quarantine in the past, the I've talked to the nurse and the nurse has been like, one time I got tested on day four and she said, you're at or day three. And she's like, you're actually a little bit too early. And I said, oh, I just like to make sure I'm going to get tested on these other days. But I don't like personally, like I don't love the nose swab, but I'll do that because I'm an adult and that's fine. I don't, I don't want any child to have to quarantine because of me or my child. But um, for a kid, so why are we, if day three is too early to test somebody because that's very uncommon that the test will even pick somebody up, pick something up? Why would we be testing them on the first day? Like, because the the nasal swab, like some kids are okay with it. I'll tell you, my kids are not a fan. Can you not hear me? Or are you making a thumbs up sign?
I'm just asking the gentleman to turn the volume.
Oh, okay. So um, like why are, why do they have to test on day one and three and not just five and seven? Or if you wanted to do three because they may have been exposed, do you know what I'm saying from the date of their exposure? Because the incubation period is generally on day four when you would test positive. So I'm just curious as to why they would have them test so much, just because it can be a lot for a kid and that may be off putting to parents being willing to do the step test to stay, which it's like you read my mind, Dr. Mingle, because I was wondering, I was going to ask the question about like how many kids have actually that have had to quarantine have actually had gotten COVID from school. I'd also want to know, like, I totally get like birthday parties, all of that stuff. Those, those are generally common places where they do test positive if they are exposed. But I do wonder if we've also tracked potentially outdoor sports or outdoor exposure. And if that could be one of the things that people do, because I myself like from a soccer, my daughter had a test, my daughter had to quarantine from soccer, outdoor soccer, not indoor soccer, outdoor soccer. And we know that outdoor exposure is also very low. So I was just wondering if that could be something that could be looked at to add into that whole quarantining policy. Um, what was the other thing that you guys talked about? Oh, I wanted to give a plug for subbing. People, if you're afraid to sub in the school because you see movies and like students are horrible, our students are amazing. They're incredibly easy to work with. I work in the middle school, which is generally far more challenging than the the elementary school. You will never find a more appreciative staff. Every time I come in, thank you so much. Everybody is incredibly helpful. They're always learning. So anybody who's nervous because you don't have experience working with kids, it's very easy. You will like it. You get like, it's fun. You get to see some kids that you know. Sometimes it's it's nice. And then the final thing I wanted to say is I really appreciate this board. I know that this year has been incredibly difficult. And at any point in time, you all could have said, I'm done. I appreciate that you had the diversity of thought. I appreciate that people have tried their hardest to get kids in school as much as possible, even when they've been met with opposition. I I appreciate the non tunnel vision and looking into regionalization and the fact that you have paid attention to the finances. Woo hoo, finance committee. Not enough has been made that that we kept our taxes at zero. A zero increase and that you didn't have. Some people think that it was rushed, the decision about redistricting and rezoning, but you guys have actually been talking about it since last spring, the new community. And so I really wanted to say a heartfelt appreciation that while I always, I haven't always agreed with all the decisions that you've made. I could not imagine being in your position and I'm incredibly thankful. Have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you.
So she was the only one who listened, so.
Yeah.
Um, seeing no other applicants, please turn the microphone on.
Okay, so that's the end of public commentary. There will be another set of public commentary when I have to make uh, are there any items for board consideration that a board member wishes to pull for discussion or separate vote? Seeing none. Uh, motion to approve items for board consideration, A one and A two, B one through B eight and C one through C thirteen.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Yeah, Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Yes.
This color?
Yes.
Sir Weinstein?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Any unfinished business? Seeing none, uh, new business, Mr. Bishi?
Uh, the only reason I put this on was I got the email from the New Jersey State School Board Association about their desire for school districts to strongly oppose the um, Senate forty two, forty eight and Assembly Bill sixty two, seventeen, because that had to do with unfunded mandates, the state being allowed to make uh, regulations or 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 laws that impose costs on school districts, but don't provide the funding to the school districts. So I was very impressed with how many, there's going to be hundreds of school districts. I actually emailed the guy in that note, Jonathan, and he replied back. And I said, well, let me know. It seems like it's up for vote today in Trenton. And he said, they pulled it from the vote so that we don't have to worry about it. He said, you can discuss it if you want to, but I think we've kind of dodged this bullet. But it reminded me, Mr. Franco, of your opening comments about things coming out of Trenton that might not be logical. Let's stick with the logic. So maybe this is something that in future board meetings, we could talk about. When they do try to, you know, uh, pass legislation that's not favorable to us and the New Jersey State School Boards Association was against this as well as other organizations, the league municipalities and everything, you know, how active do we want to be as a board in actually passing resolutions and contacting our local representative and, you know, showing our displeasure with the uh, bills that are coming out of Trenton? So that's the bullet at this point, but maybe we could talk about those kind of things at future board meetings.
Well, Mr. Bishi, we appreciate your diligence on that. Any comments to that? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to the second round of public commentary. This can be for any topic whatsoever. Um, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. We'll call upon you. We will have whatever. We say three minutes, but today's a special day. Seeing no hands, anybody in the room? No. Oh, Mrs. Singleton. Go ahead, Mrs. Singleton.
Good evening. Uh, Rachel Singleton, twenty two, Dewa, Chilwell West. Um, I just wanted to say I agree with your comments, Mr. Franco, about um, treating everybody the same. So one rule should apply to both the vaccinated and the unvaccinated. Given this virus doesn't really care if you're vaccinated or not. So I appreciated your comments on that. Um, also, Mr. Bishi, what you just said about um, illogical things coming out of Trenton. Yes, please, as a board in the future, do express you know, your thoughts on these things that that keep coming out that either have nothing to do with education of the academics per se. Um, and um, you know, pu- please do push back on some of the things that come out of Trenton when they appear illogical or irrational. And um, thank you, everybody, for your service this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Singleton. Seeing no other hands. I believe that concludes our meeting. So for the final time, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed, especially the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.